We can hear you, that's fine.
All right. How are you Susan? Thanks so much for printing things out and getting us all ready.
Can you do me a favor? You could just identify yourself for the record, who you represent and what you'd like to discuss with us?
Yeah, absolutely. That's coincidentally exactly how I was gonna kick it off. My name's Tom. Partner for Solar Power Financial. And I'm here to talk to you all about solar on your landfill. I gather you've been having some conversations over the years and I hope now is finally the time. Some policy changes out there we'll talk about a little bit. Benefits to putting a solar array there, you're probably familiar with them, but three main things that turns, you know, basically an underutilized property into something that's beneficial for the town in three ways. First, there'd be land lease income from it. Second, there's a tax income and we would need to negotiate some known payment in lieu of taxes just because if it's going to fluctuate and we don't know how it's going to fluctuate, we can't finance it. So, there's a lot of, there's more and more. We're at in New Hampshire now, so there's some models to look at for that. So, I'm confident we can work through that. And the third way is saving on your electric bills. And it can, it's really any meter, any of the town meters, the schools, any business, and ultimately any meter within EverSource's territory. So, that's the benefit of the group net metering program, which I'll get into a little bit more in detail.
So, that passed?
I don't know, so I was gonna ask him.
Thank you. Yeah, I was gonna get there, but not. Maximum size of group net metering from 1 megawatt to 5. So, it's passed the House and Senate. It's in, what do they call it, the process right now?
Governor's desk?
Yeah, it's going to the governor's desk for sure. And you know, he didn't sign it last year, similar bill, but different in one very important way this year. They took out. Shifting costs to all ratepayers. So, that element is gone. We have some third-hand indication that the governor's happy with the bill. Don't know yet, never know until he signs it, but.
And you mentioned EverSource, but where actually Unitil?
Yeah, right, exactly.
Okay, and then the only other thing is, you mentioned it would discount electric rate for the schools and town, but I thought it had to be like.
It does have to be, has to be in the same utility territory. So, as long as they're Unitil meters.
Okay. All right, so it don't have to be on the property?
It does not. And that was changed, that's. So, all they're doing this year is changing it to bigger sizes. So, yeah. That's a great. Metering, it's just like virtual net metering in New York, Massachusetts. I mentioned New York just because we've had a lot of experience there. We just finished a 26-megawatt portfolio, which is 10 smaller, small systems. Very, very similar program to here. You have to go out and find the customers, you have to get the land, and you have to get the award. In this case, there's an incentive in New York, so you get an award as well. We did all that and successfully completed those about a year ago. So, it's a big reason we moved into New Hampshire, not just because our own experience, but a lot of the investors that we work with have been tracking or even helping write policy in New Hampshire. So, you know, they're gonna come right along with us. Be like choices anyway. So, I'll give you a quick background before I go into the proposal itself. Just a little bit of background on Solar Power Financial. We've been at this about a decade. We focus on large commercial and small utility systems. That range means pretty much a half a megawatt or 500 kilowatts to about 20 megawatts. We don't really try to be big utility players. It's an extremely competitive place with very thin margins. We try to focus on a place where there's a high, high value to a community. So, we get really entrenched and involved in helping the community. We've successfully completed 65 megawatts of projects right now. We actually have 50 in development that aren't, these are contracted projects, not prospects in our pipeline. These are projects that we have under contract with landowners and we're working on right now. And I expect, I expect. Probably about eight 5-megawatt projects in New Hampshire. And I'm almost halfway there, so. Not just leasing, in case that matters for anyone. So, having a big portfolio is pretty key to us because it really gives us a big market advantage. Because with, once we de-risk that portfolio, do a lot of permitting work, the interconnection studies, environmental, you know, site-specific things, we can pool those projects and then take them out to, we have about 20, we know about 100 investors, but really there's 20 or so that are just right for this kind of market. And having that big portfolio allows us to go to some of those bigger ones. So, they're attracted by something bigger than 5 megawatts. They won't even motivate, you know, they won't get off, off a chip. And they also have much better buying, volume buying, so their prices for buying equipment is much lower. And essentially when we're done with this process and we move at every single detail of all these responses and we make sure they get structured in a way that it's apples to apples. So, we know not just the pricing, but the terms. And there's risk in those terms, so we make sure that those all feel the same, are the same in terms of risk. And we end up basically giving you an RFP for free in the end. It's probably more robust than, than most towns would do an RFP for, and it's just our job. It's not something we charge for, it's just what we do. Just two pages and then one that's two-sided, one page, specific to New Hampshire. Goes over a lot of what I just said, but maybe a little more detail in there. And I'll leave you to, you know, have those documents for your resources and we'll just look for questions if you have more details.
So, can you back up a second? So, you're not actually a solar company, you're the?
We are a developer.
Developer, so you go out to the market and find someone?
That's right.
Okay.
So, yeah, just to clarify my distinction, we won't be the investor-owner. We won't own it long-term. We're an early-stage developer and there's a place in the market that's very established for us. For the reasons I just cited, you know, people, the big developers just won't come into a market until there's a good-sized portfolio there, so.
And what's your fee for that?
I very. With them, with the investor. I think New Hampshire's gonna be some of the thinnest fees we've ever earned. New York, we got between 5 and 7 cents a watt. DC, which matters because the DC's bigger than AC. It gets derated to be AC, but happy to go into more detail about that, but.
If we were buying with someone for our electric, if we.
Got a bulk, you got a bulk.
Consolation or someone else. Does that affect this?
Doesn't matter one bit.
Doesn't matter one bit?
Nope. The host delivers power to the grid. The utility delivers a credit based on the host's utility rate, which is a default rate, you know, 8, 9 cents depending on what months you're in, kilowatt hour. It collects that income and then, but for the. We're called the group members. And then, again, can be any meter in the utility service territory, but we have to sign them up. There's an agreement, we have to file with the PUC and they, you know.
They're what, they're gonna purchase the power or?
They don't actually purchase it. We just have an agreement with them to give them some of the benefit of it. So, essentially all it is, is we collect money from the utility, we pay them some. So, half a cent to a penny depending on what we negotiate with them. But, you know, about a penny a kilowatt hour, we save them for the life of the project.
And to build the solar array, like the state grants for it, can you, are those unlimited to apply? Because like we're looking at putting a very small array at the library, very generic just for that building.
Right.
And is state grants that would go towards it? Do we lose that for this or is?
I do not, I, you could, someone may correct me before I'm done in this state, but so far I haven't found a group net metering program that is eligible for grants. Only a net meter, which is what you're talking about where it's connected, what's called behind the meter, they connect directly to the meter of the building.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's grants for that. Which is very low compared to Massachusetts, New Jersey, New York. All of them have, have the same kind of high rates plus an incentive, usually in the 3 to 6 cents a kilowatt hour. If you're. It's in a. A bit, but it's, it's on the order of 23 cents a kilowatt hour right now. So, the economics in Massachusetts are triple to four times more lucrative than New Hampshire and New York is about double New Hampshire. New Hampshire's the least lucrative New England state from a developer's point of view. But, you know, I, I grew up in Rover, Vermont, and I've had streams and deer from my neighbors my whole life. And the big reason I got into this industry, and I've watched it since I was a kid and finally was able to get into it a decade ago is, is they actually have more solar in the world and just have clean power. Everybody likes clean water, everybody likes clean air. So, I kinda take it personally and I wanna see solar happen. I have a personal affection and property here in New Hampshire. I've been coming here every, every summer since I was a kid. We have property on Lake Winnipesaukee that my great-grandma built on an island. And coincidentally, one of my business partners also has property on Lake Winnipesaukee. So, we figured that out and decided we wanted to set up camp here. So, we're gonna have an office here for the next 2, 3 years, however long it takes to run these.
So, to, for my benefit and the benefit of you, is could you say? Exactly what each wall is as far as you're the developer, right? You're going to a community or?
It's 30 to 35 acres, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so in reading in here, is that the lease option, what I was looking at was a benefit of 1,000? What was it?
Uh, yeah, so.
Income schedule.
So, for our lease option period, we can negotiate different payments, but there would just be an annual payment to keep the option open. So, we operate under that option period for 3 years. When you're collecting this income, this lease rate is what we've clarified with our investors, is what a project here can handle. The costs that a project in New Hampshire can handle. So, the $1,000 per acre per year is, you know, we already have some insight into the market that that's what we can get. Ultimately, we're trying to maximize that number for you. And we actually sit, I guess, like a transaction broker, you know? We try to make the deal happen, so we make everybody get transparent.
So, you don't construct the project?
No. No, I mean.
Okay. So, you secure the property?
Yeah, we secure the property.
And do you, who determines the contractor, the investor?
Yes.
Okay. And then, then the investor secures the contractor, builds the field out, right? And then he retains the ownership of it, the investor?
Yes. They have to.
In perpetuity?
Well, depends on the investor, depends on the group that we go with. Some of them do, most of them do. There are some that are pure, what we call, tax equity investors. So, they come in here and just take the tax benefits. For that, they have to hold the property a minimum of 7 years, 6, but they like to hold it a year longer so the IRS doesn't yell at them. So, basically that tax. Leave the project at the end of 7 years and they would sell it to an owner-operator. And those structures are set up at the beginning though. So, day 1, you know what happens in year 7. It's a flip structure, so the investor flips out and a new owner flips in.
So, what would you say generally the cost associated with building out a 5-megawatt, 35-acre parcel? That the investor's gonna be into it for?
Yeah, it's about a dollar fifty a watt figure DC, but it'll be about 6 megawatts, so 7, 7.5 million, that range for a 5-megawatt.
More than that, right? At a buck fifty?
Yeah.
That's what, 7.5 million? Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, or in that range, yeah. A lot of things can affect that.
On that investment?
For them.
Okay. And is that, that tax credit, is it?
You wanna be able to monetize it in year 1 and every investor we use does. Absolutely can. In addition to that, they're monetizing 100% depreciation under Trump's new rules. It's not the one, the old 179 rules which have phased out the 100% year 1 bonus depreciation.
Year 1, they can take the whole 7.5 million?
Yep. Exactly. So, that's where the benefit is for the tax investor, obviously.
Plus, he's, so who? And he's getting the revenue from whatever it generates?
Yeah.
The investor is, right?
Yeah, it's a special entity, right? It's a special purpose entity, so there'll be partners in that entity. You'll have the owner who intends to be there for the long-term. The owner-investor who may or may not be there for the long-term and they will all have certain shares, certain holdings of that entity.
And who dictates to, it's, it's Unitil who has to buy the power, right? The ones that grid in this area?
Correct.
And how do they set the rate that they're paying that investor? Is it, is it go by auction?
Oh, it's the PUC establishes that it's the default rate.
And the default rate? The future? Is that basically? The, pretty much the, the market rate that the utility would have to, if they went out to, like went to Canada, Hydro or something like that, they could buy it at, at that or less?
Definitely less.
That's how they?
That's a rate that they, it's, it's actually a lot. It's 8 to 9 cents a kilowatt hour. It's not, obviously, some rate classes you've got higher than that, but it's, it's.
Okay, so Unitil? He says to pay that rate?
Correct.
So.
For, till 2040.
But could Unitil, there, could Unitil buy it, energy cheaper than that on the open market?
Sometimes, yes. Absolutely. So, the, this gets back to the. Language right now and what the governor didn't like about it.
Where's the incentive? They're forced to buy it?
The incentive?
There is no.
For who, for the utility?
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't have a choice.
Okay, so it's, it's not that it's, hey, it's, you, you have to pay what the lowest market rate is. It's a set rate and because geographically it's in your area, then you have to buy it.
That's right.
So, I can't.
Anyway. Because of the flexibility and they can't always guarantee it, but. So, can I ask you, our benefit, aside from all the investors, what they're making? Our benefit is we're getting lease.
A lease payment?
And we're getting X amount of electricity that's generated.
Correct.
Is that negotiated or is it just we get 20% or what is it?
As much as you want. As many meters as you'd like to service with that.
So, as much as the time consumes, get. Unitil has to buy it for?
No, we're gonna just give you a credit. Basically, we're gonna give you a half a cent or a penny off per kilowatt hour. So, every meter's gonna have a kilowatt hour and we're gonna pay you a penny for that kilowatt hour. So, effectively it reduces your rate at your meter, no matter what rate you're on.
Okay, so that. I mean, 'cause of you, you know, Unitil's expenses and maintenance and all that stuff. If they have to pay, let's say they gotta pay, but PUC says you have to buy it at 4 cents, I mean, 8 cents. And let's say they have an operating cost built in there, so they may be selling it at 10 cents, right? To their customers?
Some of their customers, absolutely.
It's a stranded cost, right, it's separate?
Well, I'm getting into, I'm getting into ISO New England and utility management and.
And so you.
You're just getting a check worth half.
Be consumed.
Just call it a penny, a penny a kilowatt hour.
A penny a kilowatt.
For every kilowatt hour you consume with that meter.
Like a rebate?
Like a rebate. Exactly. We just, we write you a check.
And that's regardless of whatever the rate is we pay?
Doesn't matter.
If we negotiate the best rate, we still get that?
Absolutely. Your tariff does not matter. Whatever your underlying tariff is or who you get power from is not relevant. Yep. Yep.
And then the investors also get the. I forget what they call that was, they get, so they get the 30%?
They get the depreciation and they get income. They get the 8 cents.
They get the credits, right?
Right.
Which they can sell?
Yes, well Rex, there's actually a bill going through, I'm not sure it's passed yet, but I got it right here.
And what are that, what's that equated to?
Senate Bill 124 would increase the minimum amount of the renewable portfolio standard. So, this is a minimum amount that each utility has to buy from renewables every year. It's set right now and this, this bill. Increase it by 1% more than it already is. It's, it's very minimal already.
What is it now?
I think it's under 5%. In fact. Sorry, I got a lot of states in my head, so I don't necessarily have that one, but it's, it's really low. It's a really low one.
So, those credits aren't, don't add up to much in New Hampshire, is that what you're telling us?
Right now, they don't. This bill, if it passes, will add a little bit. So, we'll, you know, the owner of the system will end up getting maybe 2 cents a kilowatt hour. But to be honest, you know, that's gonna make the deal or break the deal. That, whether that comes through is the difference between it working in New Hampshire or not. And not just because it's cloudy, not just because it's rocky and not just because it's, you know, it's hard to build everywhere, it's, it's everything combined. So, New Hampshire overall is a tough state to do business in for the investors, developers. So, I wanted to fill in a little bit more about your concern for the utility and there's one element there that the, that's why the governor didn't sign the bill last year was become. Standby, standby power, ability to provide whatever is gonna be needed at peak. They have to go out and make sure that's ready, whether it's running or not.
They, they pay for that to make sure you're ready to go if we need you?
Absolutely, and that capacity is a real number for them, very real number. So, last year, the bill was, it said that the utility couldn't count the solar at all. So, even though solar was there and it was reducing the capacity they needed. True, not 100% of the time, but it does reduce the amount of capacity they have to go buy. They couldn't count that.
Well, they can't really ramp up the solar though, right?
Well, ISO New England is taking care of that.
A fossil fuel plant that's not running that fire it up and meet the increased demand. I mean, the solar puts out what the solar puts out, right?
Yep, exactly. Yeah, but so. Because there's not enough good land with interconnection to really change the way the system's operated already. What made the difference for the utility? They wouldn't have counted demand response. So, if you turn off all your motors in a moment and get paid for that, you know, so the utility doesn't have to provide power in those times, they now can count solar the same way. So, when they go to the capacity market, that means they have a reduction in the amount of capacity they need to buy. So, it saves them money. And there will, you know, I, I haven't run all the numbers on this particular state, but I think there will be some cost that's handed to other ratepayers, but far, far less. And it'll be fairly negligible.
So, that, that bill would, it would reimburse the owners of the solar field because it is reducing part of the, the need for additional ramp-up power? So, are they gonna get paid for that now or you say?
Indirectly, no, not. Indirectly, they get a, they get to sell the renewable energy credit, which is a dollar amount per megawatt hour. So, if the utility needs to buy more solar, if they're required. This other Senate Bill 124, that would be another income source that the.
So, the renewable energy credit now, what are they getting from?
They're 2, 2.3 cents.
2.3 cents.
Yeah, but it's, there's no forward curve on that market, there's just this year. Like other markets, they're 5 to 10 years forward because they know what the market's going to be. So, there's, that's real what matters for development, for an investor in particular. They need to see that there's an income, at least in some range, right? They need to estimate what it's gonna be for a few years. There isn't that benefit here and it probably never will be.
So, if a lease is signed and an investor is brought in, who is responsible for the maintenance of that 35 acres that the investor is now in charge of?
The investor. They will have an owner-operator on board, whether, if it's them themselves, they'll have their own operations teams that'll go out there. But more often than not, the industry runs now with third-party operators. So, no matter who owns it, they hire somebody to come and make sure it's running smoothly.
And is there a certain standard of maintenance that's put in there? I mean, obviously it's a landfill, we don't need trees growing, I mean, it's gotta be.
For you?
Ode and.
A standard of maintenance for you all is just don't build anything that shades it or interferes with its operation in any way?
No, I'm saying for the investor. The standard of maintenance that he's gonna keep it.
Yeah, not, oh, absolutely. Not just maintaining the field.
The same, have to keep it to a standard that, that you all agree to, that's in the lease for sure. Trying to think what else. The landfill obviously physically won't be penetrated, is it capped? Is it membrane cap on that landfill?
Yeah.
So, obviously there's ballasted system that goes on top of that, concrete ballast system. Work around this vent stacks, you know, if the vent stacks need to be extended because the solar sticks up 15 feet or whatever, we do that. So, we have, there'd be absolutely no involvement or money for you to do any of it. Over the life of it, including decommissioning. At the end, we take it away at our cost.
And what, what's the life expectancy?
Panels these days are, are warranted for 25 years. 40 years is a normal operating life.
40?
You'll need to replace inverters halfway through that, but we.
So, how long a lease do they look for?
Uh, 30.
30 years.
Yeah. And that's structured, there's 20 years to start and then 2 5-year extensions at our option. So, it's 30 years from your point of view unless all of a sudden it's not worth anything and we want out of there. You know, that, that doesn't, not likely to happen that way. Likely to keep going and then at the end of that, likely to come back to you and say, hey, they're still going great. You wanna stay in or? Or is there, you know, 30 years from now, maybe there's a new technology or something that's incredible? You wanna switch out?
And if we did a small solar array in the library? It doesn't matter, whatever we're using for kilowatt hours there, that's still gonna be, we're gonna get credit for that, correct?
That does matter. That's not group net metering, that's net metering. And you can only produce 120, on that solar array, you can only produce 120% of the average annual consumption at that meter.
Given it, so we wouldn't get credit for the library's meter, right? You said what you're gonna do is pay a penny per.
Yeah, yeah.
Hour we use, kilowatt hours. Do we still get a penny for that one?
As long as you don't have a net metered system there, we can give you a credit. We can give you a credit on any meter. But you can't do both programs. You can't do both net meter and then have me give you a penny under a group net meter.
Well, you can't just on, on that meter, right?
Right, just. Of course, right, yeah.
I mean, it really doesn't, with this, makes no difference really how much energy you consume other than you get, you only get a penny on the kilowatt hours, right?
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, with the old days, you had to consume most of it.
Yeah. That was it. And you had to be connected at that facility, so you're limited by whatever area, roof or ground you could muster at that facility, you know, right there. So, that is the power. I know a lot of incremental in writing the policies in New York helped out in New Hampshire. So, it's actually better, there is one. New Hampshire that's better than New York and that is that it does not matter what meter tariff you are on. For us to give you the credit, the tariff is irrelevant. In New York, you actually have to do it based on the tariff of the customer. And it's, it gets into a lot of complication and math and you have to convince them that there's gonna be value there, you know, you have to show them that and it's, it's more complicated. So, here it's simple and nobody can question it. It's just, we have a contract to pay you X per kilowatt hour and every month we do that. X per kilowatt hour, and every month we do that. So, yeah.
More questions?
All right. You want to look over the proposal a little closer? Or, I mean, you know where your landfill is, but.
Digest it and talk about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then.
Representative One, that I was asked to possibly address. I'd be happy to if you cared to.
Well, you answered the 20% thing isn't accurate.
That's right. Yeah.
Um, and I think.
There are some technical things in there. But you know what?
So, so why is the utility company not going to be happy?
Because.
The. Um, this is really just more on how they get paid. You know, they, they have gotten paid primarily by deploying assets. So they get a fixed return on assets that are deployed. So that's changing in New Hampshire because they're divesting those assets, and they're not going to own them anymore. And they're just buyers and sellers, basically just market makers.
Yeah, they're not generators anymore.
Not generators anymore. So that, that, that's one piece that makes them feel better. And that's why New Hampshire has moved to that, because it changes the motivation structure so that utilities aren't fighting so much against renewables.
And, and if they're just, you know, if they can buy it from, if their fixed cost is, let's say, four cents a kilowatt hour, and because of this, the PUC says, hey, you have to buy it for eight, they're just going to put that on the, they're going to take their cost and put it on another four, and now it's 12, right?
They have to put it in a rate case, and they have to get it approved, and they have to show you why.
So.
But yes.
Or if they could buy in the market.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they can only charge so much anyways over their, their operating expense, right?
Yeah, without going.
I guess maybe that.
Well, they, they see the.
They must be able to spread that, that power out across their whole.
And in fact, across.
So, so.
And it's important. And that's why you've got to change the incentives so that all those align properly, and there's, the actual savings that solar delivers get realized because it does deliver value. It does deliver savings. You can build and operate a solar facility today in New Hampshire for less than you can just operate a coal plant. Period. You know, I, I've done this all over the country, and in some places, it's incredibly lucrative because, like Hawaii, you know, they're, they're going to be 100% renewable power probably within 15 years because it's 33 cents a kilowatt hour for them to burn oil to produce electricity. It's crazy. So they're. It's coming, and there may be batteries installed on these systems here as well. We'll look at the economics very closely, but.
And that's just for storage, right?
For storage, yeah, exactly. Clouds, just a little bit, which is a consternation to the operators of the grid, right? ISO New England and those folks are, they're pulling levers and they don't like to see that swing. And it's inefficient to do that swing, that's true. But the. Delivers its most in the, in the middle of the day, but people come home, they're turning on whatever. You want to push that, that delivery, the, the supply a couple hours into the afternoon. And then it becomes much more valuable for the utility at that time, that time of day. So to the degree that gets built into the rates here, it'll become very valuable to have batteries. And they are doing it. There's a whole program, a whole rate, it's not a rate case, the PUC has a docket out that's considering all. Peak shaving with, with storage, but it can handle voltage regulation, which is a cost for the utility to manage that and for the ISO New England to manage that. And one more, I'm thinking, I forget, one more capacity. Um. And, and this is a very locational benefit, but, and the utilities know where these, these are, but there are weak points out on the lines where if they had generation in that location, they would not have to build a line or a substation. That deferred cost, the cost of capital for them is far, far greater than solar. That's, that's the biggest win, is when you can get real locational value of solar out there. So that's what the PUC is looking at right now. They expect to have that done in 2021. So we will see what the new rate reality is. And we'll, we won't be building for next year at the earliest and probably 2021. So we're going to be right in time with whatever they come up with for, for rates.
All right. Well, thanks for coming in. Let's, give us an opportunity to kind of talk about it and.
My pleasure. Appreciate you all out in the end. Great.
Thank you.
You betcha. Good luck with it. Feel free to call me.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Next on our agenda, Charlie Zilch, SEC engineer. I don't think we have a copy, no.
Do you like one?
Sure, that'd be great.
All set. Charlie Zilch from SEC and Associates with Joe Bresnahan from Bresnahan Movers. Sure everybody's familiar that Joe has a project over at Seven Marshall Road in 125 for his 15-unit self-storage facility. We're at the point now, we're all approved. Joe's been out there, as you can see from the activity at the site, he's cut the trees. We've done our pre-construction meeting. We put together a bond estimate for the first two phases, which is kind of highlighted on that plan in red. And that bond estimate for the first two phases has been reviewed by Dennis and Rich. And I believe they're all set, unless they want to tell me something otherwise. And so what we're looking for at this point is obviously to secure the work at the site by offering up what we hope is acceptable to this board is 10% of that, that cost estimate. So the cost estimate in rough numbers is $690,000 for the work, soup to nuts kind of thing. So 10% is obviously about $69,000. So Joe's prepared to offer up that and hopefully get moving forward here.
All right. You want to speak to that, Dennis?
Um, well, the, looking at the typical bonding is for road development and people pulling building permits for homes. And so bonding for that purpose is important because the road has to be built and town specifications for the use of people, not only that are going to be living in that, those homes, but also the workers that are going to go in and out and emergency vehicles going in and out. For site plans, it's a little bit different because they're building it for a purpose that doesn't involve residential dwelling and the, their purpose is different. And so the question is whether bonding is necessary for 100% of the prop, of the estimate for all the groundwork. And that's what this spreadsheet does, is it gives you an idea what all the groundwork is in developing the property, which is the stormwater management, the road work, to construct all the, the traveled ways, not necessarily a road, but it's the traveled ways and the parking areas to get in and around the proposed storage buildings. And so, so looking at it from the point of view from the town, the town certainly wants to have bonding in place. The question is to what degree? And suppose a scenario was to happen where things changed with the ownership of the property, with the marketability of these storing units or whatever type of use on the property changes, that it becomes of no value to anybody. And the project is half-done, piles of dirt all over the place. And so the question, I think, and the responsibility of the town would want to be to stabilize the site. So to stabilize the site, you'd be looking at erosion control in place. You'd be looking at leveling off any piles of dirt. So there's some machine work that would need to be done, grading. It would have to be seeding and getting grass growing, stabilizing the site. And I think that's probably what, for a site plan, that's what the interest would be for the town and protecting the town. So just for, for instance, just looking at the spreadsheet, they've come up with fine grading of $32,000 and hydroseeding, mulch and fertilizer of $32,000, $64,000 just of that, those two line items for, for that. So you add in some for sediment control, silt fencing and stuff like that, if it needs more work. Maybe it, it also would need some, some direction, whether it be me or someone else do some work to make sure it gets done and stabilized correctly and follow up on it. Some further seeding, if it doesn't get seeded properly, doesn't grow. So I kind of think that, you know, as a minimum, it should be in the $60,000 to $70,000 range, but there's certainly some room between there and the total amount that the town might be interested in, in holding as a bond. So I think that that's, that's the important thing is, 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 and the fact is that once the bond is in place, they're going to be in a position, I would think, to get this developed right away. So a lot of the work is going to be done in a short period of time. I mean, the clearing is already done. Stumping can be done quickly. Building the detention ponds, it should be done, one of the first things that should be done. And it's recommended, and not only from the town, but also state, to do all the drainage work first. And so all of that work is going to be done and stabilized and completed in a short period of time. So when you think about what could happen and what, what the town should be responsible for, to ask an applicant like this to, to, to put up 600 and almost $700,000 is, is, seems like it's overkill. But obviously, there's maybe some minimums that the town certainly should come up with that, that would work. And so that's what I think they're in here now to talk about and be able to work something out to minimize the, the amount of a bond.
Rick, did you want to add to it?
So just so there's no confusion, the simple fact that the town has accepted this plan, we are responsible. The town is responsible in case the unforeseen happens, where the applicant goes away, disappears, whatever happens. The town is responsible for this.
Okay.
It's part of the stormwater.
Management.
Stormwater management that we bought into, that the federal government stuffed down our throat in 2003. It is a requirement. And I, I don't have anything to disagree with Dennis. You know, if this was a road job, we'd be looking for, you know, 600 and 70.
The full amount, I guess.
Full amount, plus, plus 10 or 15%, I think, actually, as contingent. So that the town and the residents don't get burned. This is basically a blank piece of land they're developing. We need some money so that in case the, the unforeseen, not the inevitable, the unforeseen happens and, you know, the world ends, the town can fulfill their obligation through the stormwater, FEMA, not FEMA.
So, so where did the 10% number come from? I, I mean, that's. Just to, to do the site, not, not the buildings and all that, just the groundwork, right?
Just the groundwork.
So where did 10% come from?
It's kind of an industry standard. And as Dennis had said, one of the first things that Joe's going to be responsible for is putting in his erosion control and all of his infiltration ponds, all of his erosion control, drainage, that all goes in first. So that's going to be in place. Chances of Joe defaulting on the project prior to that being done is extremely remote. Usually, if someone gets into trouble, they're well into it. They're in over their heads. They're into the building of the buildings or something like that. So I would assume that, that Joe would be able to easily handle all the initial earthwork, get the drainage, get that site stabilized, then be working on the building areas, which is a smaller area than the overall footprint of the entire site. So 10%, I would think, would be more than enough money to come back in, as Dennis noted, to go in there, maybe knock down the piles, add your own seed, stabilize the site. Much smaller area to work with.
You're not going to be looking for bond releases at all until after the project is done?
I would say, no, not at all.
Keep it at the end.
Yeah, all the way to the end. Yep.
I think, given that, the, the nature of the project and the phasing of the construction, I, I think the number is reasonable.
Dennis, are you good with the 10%?
Yes, sir.
Rich?
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion that we, we accept 10% of the total amount of this project to be put into a bond.
Second half.
Discussion. You, I didn't quite get that from, from Dennis or Rich. I mean, Rich keyed in what we would normally get, and I'm not suggesting that. The impression I got from Dennis was that, you know, 60 grand, $9,000 was pretty bare bones. I know that's where the 10%, that's why I was curious where the 10%.
10% is the minimum, that's what I.
The 10% figure.
I basically said it was the minimum that, that would.
Right. So, you know, I, I don't know that, I guess my. When we've gone minimum, I mean, we were just discussing one, that, that, you know, things happen and over time, costs go up and, you know, things can turn into litigation. And by the time that gets resolved, something that was one price, five years later is, is a lot more money. So I, I just wanted to throw that out for the rest of the board.
The 10% is phase one, and he'll have to come back to phase two and phase three. That's just it. This is on the project.
This is for phase one, phase two.
So does that money move with each phase? So once he's complete, that money moves to phase two? And it looks like phase.
Except he's saying phase one and phase two are together.
That's the price for phase one, phase two.
Phase one and phase two, but there's also a phase three. So if they, most of all the drainage work is, would be done and completed in phase.
In phase one and two.
Correct.
One and two. Phase three is, is the, the following phase, which this would carry through.
So we're, we're, we're only going to issue building permits for one phase at a time?
It's phase one and two with this first rule.
Yep. So if he did get into trouble before he could do anything with phase three, we just don't issue the building permits. All right? I mean, that's a, that's our security to, to prevent him from going further if he gets in over his head. And, and we just wouldn't let him build into phase three, I would assume.
Would you?
That makes sense. Sure.
Yeah. I mean, the indication was that the bond was going to stay in place throughout the project?
Yes. Yes. Throughout
Phase one and two. Phase two.
Right. And then if he, once he's ready to start phase three, again, a new estimate, new bond estimate, and then 10% of whatever that cost may be.
Well, I think we should come in and revisit phase three.
Okay. Great. Question for you, Dennis. Would you feel more comfortable if the bond was higher and if the work's done in relatively short time, then we release down to the 10%?
Well, looking at the spreadsheet, I quoted $32,000 for the cost of the spreading the topsoil, fine grading and hydroseeding. 25% more than that, if you look at the 25% column, 25% more than that is is $40,000 for each of those. So there's a difference there if you wanted to. And again, like I said before, the the 60-some-odd thousand is the minimum. If you're looking at a percentage more, there's already a column there that's listed out as 25% more, which is $40,000 apiece, which gets you up to $80,000. So if you're looking at more, that's maybe the next thing you could look at because it's already spelled out on the spreadsheet of 25% more. I mean, that's kind of what the spreadsheet is telling us, is that it's holding a 25% more. And that's an inflation number that we use on all of our spreadsheets. So that's why I said the 32,000 for each of those items to get you up to 64. And that's that range, $60,000 to $70,000, was probably the minimum. And if you want to think about doing possibly some more, looking at the column that's the 25% more gives you 80,000, well, $80,000 for those two items. So, I mean, we're trying to grab at straws here, and it's
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty hard to come up with a number that's reasonable.
I just want to raise the fact that sometimes when we go minimum, we end up getting caught on that.
I hear you. And that's why I wanted to bring it up, that if you're looking for something a little bit more, it's already spelled out here. But that's certainly, it's up to you, like I said before, is whether you want to go with the minimum or whether you want to go with something a little bit more or the full amount, I mean, obviously.
So what would happen? What would happen if we revisited after phase one and two? And and he would have to come in and we could reassess this at that point?
Well, I think that that's a good point, but I think that Mr. Bresnahan probably wants to evaluate that at that time, too, because maybe the demand wouldn't be there at that time for phase three. And so he might want the bond money back at that point in time.
At the end of phase two.
But he don't want to do phase three.
Phase one and two, right?
Phase three will be totally stump seeded and
Right. It'll be stabilized at that point anyways, and he may not want to go any further. But he want might want his bond money back. And then five years later, he might want to say, okay, now is it go again? And then we'll come back and we'll address the bond before he gets any permits.
So we're not going to let him go phase one through three
No.
With that amount of money?
No, no, no.
So that gives a buffer for the town to protect the town.
Exactly.
Well, well, he's
Right, to stop him
No, he's not
I'm saying, so he can't go further anyway.
Well, I
He might want to.
But at that point, the pools are going to be in there, the retention, everything's going to be in there. And then we just have to pay the topsoil phase three.
Everything's done.
Right.
Does the board have any objection to take, take an input before we
No, I think we should take planning board input.
Glenn, were you looking for?
Just a Glenn Koppelman with planning board. Just a a quick question for, maybe this is for for Dennis or Rich. You know, talking about protecting the town's interest, obviously, if if things really went to pot and, you know, I mean, nobody hopes that it does, but let's say half the buildings get put up, then all of a sudden, for some reason, the project goes belly up. Unlikely to happen, as Charlie said, but, you know, I mean, stuff happens. Is the town going to want to complete building and own a self-storage facility? Or are they going to want to bring the property back to a stable state without buildings and structures on it? And if the latter, you might want to consider what what kind of cost is going to be involved in addition to just spreading dirt and stabilizing the site, if you were going to have to, say, remove buildings and dispose of them and do that kind of work. And I don't know if something like that is built into these numbers. So that's my question.
Okay. Alan? Thank you.
I just wanted to caution the board that the
Okay. Do you want me to, are we done with discussion?
I think so.
We got a motion and a second on the table?
I would say it's a big difference if it's a residential to commercial, where there's people going to be living there and they have to have a road in place, lights, everything else. This is commercial. So I feel comfortable with the 10%.
Okay, I'll call the vote. If for all those in favor of reducing the required bond amount to, what was it, $69,000? Well, let's call it $70,000. Did you, was it specific on the money you made?
No, I based upon Dennis's recommendation.
I believe the total bond amount was 673,186. Is that correct, Charlie?
What do we have? We had
How much?
Seventy-three?
Six, seven, three.
Yep. What's that?
The total bond amount was 673,000.
Okay.
So $67,300.
That's what you, that's what they're asking for, right?
Yep.
Is that correct? Could I ask
That's what you're checking for.
$67,316.85 is on me.
What's your timeframe?
To do the work?
For phase one and phase two.
It'll be done by the end of the year.
Okay. Can you give me what the motion was?
I think the 10% is reasonable was the first one. Bring motion to accept 10%.
Okay. Well, apparently you already have a check with you?
I do. I had it a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. Okay. I think $67,300
Plus and minus.
Plus and minus a dollar or two.
So do you want to amend that to 11%?
The check's 67,318.65.
Okay. So who who made the motion?
I did.
And I second it.
Based upon, based upon Rich's and Dennis's comments about they thought that was sufficient. I mean, they're going to know more about this than than I certainly will. They've looked at it, studied it. They have the figures in front of them. And I think, you know, I did a little research on Mr. Bresnahan, and I've I've checked out some of the facilities. The last one I looked at was the one in Raymond, and the town of Raymond was quite happy with him. It's a, he's finished it. He did everything he said he was going to do with the town of Raymond. So his history is that he works well with with communities. So I did a little homework on him.
Okay. I guess my only question is, what's the amount you want to approve, the 10%? Or do you want to go with this check amount or?
Based upon what Dennis is recommending.
Yep. Check amount.
The check that he's holding in his hand is the motion.
It's 10%. Okay. All those in favor of accepting the 10% signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Posed?
No.
One abstention.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Who do we leave the check with?
She can get it to the right spot. You don't do ice anymore, huh?
Do you need anything else?
He hasn't looked at Babs Scott Lane yet, so we have we have nothing to ask him on that.
Right.
No update on that yet.
No, we, I don't know if anybody talked about it. The allegation was that we owned 100, what was that, 80 foot right away there?
Yeah.
I've got that deed. I picked it up from Suits. So it's out of research on it, but I haven't
Okay. No, I guess that's, you need Dennis for anything else? No, thanks, Dennis. All right, eight o'clock, the Heritage Commission.
Did you say Heritage Commission?
What's that?
You said Heritage Commission.
I did.
Very good. Well, we're back again. I'm Debbie Powers, Heritage Commission. At our, the last meeting last week, we've been discussing from the Heritage Commission's point of view how important it would be to do the archaeological phase 1B study at the Recreation Department, where they plan on putting some baseball, basketball court, baseball field, et cetera. To, as the selectmen, we agreed last week, we went out and got two proposals for two different projects. One was just doing it in a limited space, as we discussed, which was the basketball court area. And that proposal came in for that, just that area at $1,446, but to do, which would be 12 test pits, but to do more, the whole area, which is 50 test pits, is $4,486. In discussing this, at this point, we have, besides the Heritage Commission interest, obviously, in checking out the, you know, this as a historical site, we have gotten recommendations from both, the New Hampshire Department of Hysterical, hysterical, Historical Resources, and from Menadnok Archaeological Consulting, Inc., who came out and did the phase 1A, that this is a significant site and that they would recommend that we go to the phase 1B. So we have, Ernie, Landry and I spoke in with with Dr. Goodby from Menadnok. And we, you know, said that we wanted these proposals. We talked about it. He was very excited. He's like, you know, he's been talking with the state about how this is a wonderful opportunity. They really believe something's there. As a matter of fact, he also, in his proposals, say that if the test pits yielded nothing, that they would stop, do a short report, and the price would be reduced. These prices are the maximum that they'd be to be. And, you know, the other choice that we have, of course, we have the choice to do nothing, but that is really, we would really be hurting the town, in my opinion, by just not investigating this. This is one of the few areas of Kingston public ground in their their trail that has not been disturbed or privately owned. But the other option that is out there, but would have to wait a year, is the state offers a program called Scrap. This would be something that they have already said that we would be a prime candidate to do, and that would be free. They bring in volunteers from all over. We would not get the quality of the report that we would get from Menadnok. But, you know, if you, if we're balking at the $4,500, that might be something else to do. We really, Heritage Commission would really recommend that we do something on that site. We have some other people here with me tonight to speak and support if if you would allow some public input or questions or whatever. That's, I'm not sure, we've covered a lot of this over the last couple of meetings we've been here. I didn't want to go through everything again. But is there anything else that you would like us to do? If I need to, I could come back next week and have Dr. Goodby come in or someone from the state to speak more, more as an educated archaeologist on why that they see that this is such value, you know, of such value.
Mr. Chan, based on the cast conversation, and us, or me saying, I'd like to say it's due diligence, and it's within the budget that she was looking for, I would make a motion to contract with Menadnok Archaeological Consulting for $4,486.
I'll second it.
I would like to encourage the board to The Recreation Commission wanted to have
Does anybody have any idea how long it's going to take for them to do that?
Yes. From the day that we sign the contract within it, its contractually says it'll be done in 21 days with a report for us.
And so let's assume they find something. Not sure what they're going to find, but let's assume they do. That's, they're going to file a report saying they found whatever, and then we're just going to do what?
Well, it really depends on what they find and what we want to do. You know, if they find something that, like an area that might have a fire pit, maybe in one area, you'd say, we'll put some loom over it and maybe just, you know, and I don't know, and just, what is it, chop nut, pull the trees, grind, excuse me, grind the stumps in that one area. If it's a significant, what he said to us, if there was something that they found stones that was a fire pit or something like that, that you might want to mark up that area, mark off of it to do a little extra layer of dirt, loom, or something like that, and not pull the stumps. But that wouldn't be a very big area. Or you decide to go a little further, you know, I've been talking about this to other people. Someone said, well, you know, if they found a fire pit, maybe pull out a couple of stones and put a display at the library or someplace else. We don't really know until they they dig in. But the premise right now is that you find out, they do the research, they, it's, I've been reading a lot about this, and from just little pieces that they find, they can build a story and tell you the history so that you can go in and and put in your quartz or whatever, just cover it up. But again, I'm not going to say that nothing else will be done. If there is something significant that we decide that we want to keep, then then we come back and say, is it worth it? Otherwise, I mean, again, we have no, even after this is done, we've confirmed it again and again, no one can come in and tell us what to do after this is done unless they find bones. But that is not human remains, burial ground, but that has not been indicated in any report that they've looked at.
That becomes a burial site or something.
Yes, exactly.
Any other questions, comments, Virginia?
Virginia Morris, Historic District Commission. When we were looking to... For the Pottery Store, by law, that had to have an archaeological survey, because it was an Army Corps of Engineer... There were no significant ones there, and the... Until it stopped. But it's very comforting to know that now there's another... Just living, that that is a site that is... That feels good. It's finding of, for example, a campfire site that would be a gathering place, as Debbie was saying, you could cover it up and just... Keep the ball... As you said, unless it's bones, we can do that. It'd be a wonderful thing to... Scenario for the students, how old was it, what were the stones, what did they look like, were there sharp artifacts found there? And Kingston has some artifacts, and I brought one, just because I think it's, it's the kind of thing, as you know, I taught at Bakersfield forever and ever, and the Bakersfield School students think that even just this one piece is something, the archaeologist, I dated this as... The kids hold this in their hand, and they are amazed, somebody was living here with, this is called a spear... They just think that's wonderful. And if we could say, nope, there's nothing here, cover it up with a basketball court, great. There is something here, what would... Not just with the schoolchildren, but the people that come here, we're building up our wonderful museum in the Old Nichols Library, we've got a great opportunity, if we do have some finds, to share some more of Kingston's history. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a motion and a second.
Scott Hall, I believe between the two proposals, I looked at them, I don't think the short proposal would be a good idea, anyway, because if they do go in and they do find something there, like, we're pretty sure they probably will, then they're going to want to come back and do the second proposal, it's more time, it's more money, and it's just going to inconvenience everybody. I think the $4,000 proposal is probably the better route to go, they'll be more thorough with what they're doing. I looked at their website, the company's website, I saw some of the other work that they've done in other towns, they seem to be pretty thorough in what they're doing. If they do find something like any fire pits or anything like that, I would hope that it would be preserved and removed, moved someplace else, rather than left there, where they're going to get damaged. And that's what this is all about, is trying to preserve it, trying to protect it. And I think the sooner that it, they get involved and get started, then the sooner we'll have the answers, and we can continue on with the rest of it.
When will they be doing this?
He said...
Within 21 days.
Yeah.
Within 21 days?
Right, from notification of that the proposal is accepted.
I was going to say, if it was going later, maybe we could make it an educational process for the kids to go to the camp.
Watch them doing it?
But have them, watch them do it?
That would slow the process.
I don't know, if one kid's there with complete strangers, they go on the background check?
No, no, no.
We're going to have a photographer there.
Slow the process down.
We'll have a photographer there, while we'll take pictures of the whole process.
So the stumps won't be an issue for them for doing their dig?
They've already, he already gridded it out, put a grid, and he can walk around the stumps. That's the way he's coordinated his 50-pit grid, as to, the stumps are not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
We've got a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor of entering into a contract with Mr. Goodby, Dr. Goodby, for $4,486 to research the area in the Rec Department that has recently been cleared, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, extensions? One abstention? You got the contract with you?
Should I give you the right one?
And I'll amend my motion to authorize that she had signed that contract.
Sure.
You know, this isn't, yes.
Is that just a proposal, not actually the contract?
This is the contract, it's the proposal, if you can, I guess, assign, there wasn't any place, the proposal doesn't have a place for your signature on it, it's just a flat proposal.
Okay, well, you can indicate that we accept this proposal for $4,486, not to exceed.
And hopefully it is at that, because if it's less than that, then they didn't find. But no one believes that's going to happen.
Okay.
I want to thank you very much for this, appreciate it.
We'll just, yeah, we'll just use that as the PO. Okay? So Cindy will know that we agreed?
Yep.
Oh, you abstained. Rich?
Sorry.
Fireball dapped, ran me down to your sinking ship.
Well, you...
The rabbit hole. See it now, I'm an Indian bear over here.
So Susan, I'll put that in here, Cindy can consider that, the PO. All right. We've got the Fire Station Building Committee at 8:30. How you doing? What can we do for you?
I'd like to request you do this in non-public.
On public?
Want to wait till the...
What's that?
Want to wait till the end, or...
Well, we got them on at 8:30, we can come back and take care of this other stuff.
Under legal?
Under acquisition.
Acquisition of property.
Acquisition of property.
So is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourning to non-public, to discuss acquisition of property, signify by saying aye.
Don Bridge.
Richard Wilson, yes.
Mark Hites, yes.
Kevin St. James, yes.
Phil Coombs, yes. Is this the new thing we're doing?
Don educated himself and went to a class, and it's supposed to be a roll call vote.
I thought roll call was raising the hand, but a family...
Send emails around like we do.
Have to give you a name. Adam, we're...
We'd like to send John Bartley to...
What'd he say? You back on?
Yep.
So we got the energy supply proposal from Neighborhood Energy?
Yes, the guy that called Susan for us, and I talked to him, and he looked through it, so he had, he sent me this information, it's going to take a little bit to digest, but I'd also like to, I mean, we could all take a look and see if you have any questions, and invite the guy in, but I also wouldn't mind comparing it to what Rockingham Planet Commission comes back with. Yes, no?
Yes.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Yeah, who was the supplier that you said was the only one, was it Constellation?
Constellation was the one that bid last night.
Was the only one what?
When the county went out, they're the only ones that did it, and when I talked, went to planning, the Rockingham Planet Commission, they said, yeah, the Constellation's pretty much the only one that did on them. No one else did, because it's too fluctuating. Let me see.
So what's his number in here?
Not sure, I actually didn't look at it, this is the first time I had it on my phone, and Susan's...
This here says, although May shows the role it's caused, recommendations to a roll with Constellation, six-month term, May start 06-8-5. With Constellation's 36-month, November start at 07-5-8.
Well, actually, Chief Riggs, if you look at this, number three, the natural gas is trading below the five here, at 260, considering we just locked it at 137, I don't know about that.
Natural gas, not propane.
That's true, you're right, ah, never mind, my bad. To be honest, the guy was, he seemed nice enough, but a little pushy, so, you know...
Salesman?
Yeah.
The guy that came in the first time?
Well, what's his, what's his end? He's like a consultant?
Yeah, yeah, he doesn't exactly...
How's he get paid?
He, he, there's a fee in there, whatever, he gets paid by, I don't know, the, that's wouldn't be a question I'd ask.
Does the utility company pay him?
I believe so.
Any contracts he secures?
Yeah, I think so.
And the guy's here tonight?
No.
Oh, the other guy.
This guy that we're looking at.
This here. Neighborhood Energy.
Yeah, I thought he sounded too much like a flooring salesman.
So we'll take a look at it, and decide whether or not we want him to come in and talk to us?
Right, and I don't think it'll hurt to, you know, compare his to what RPC comes back with.
Did you say you wanted him to come in?
I invited him too quick.
No, then let's, we'll take a look at it first.
Well, we ain't going to make the May 19 start, so...
Yeah.
I mean, November 2019 is our target.
So on the plumbing inspectors, you're going to reach out to them, Susan?
Yeah.
Okay. Health inspector, job description, proposed amendments.
That includes all the things that we were discussing.
What's that?
That includes all the things that we were discussing.
Yeah, the only thing I would change on there, at least initially, is number seven. Believe it's Ensure, not Insure.
Oh, that was already in there, I didn't change that.
I see that, but I just wanted to, while we're making revisions.
Was that everything that you wanted, from what we talked about?
I think that captures most of it, doesn't it, Phil?
Yeah, the only thing I, I added, and it's on here, you know, I think with the EPA and the DES, he needs to be the point of contact on that, you know, when they do the PFOA testing, which they're already out there doing, but he needs to be the, you know, rather than DES coming in here, he's the one who needs to provide the results of that.
That's number five, though, right?
Number five, C.
Not only coordinating, but to be the point person?
Yeah, I mean...
It's B, right? For private wells.
Coordinating with state agencies?
So that, B and C, because essentially, from what, you know, there is potential for a more strict fishing requirement, and maybe a swimming thing, that should not be Susan calling all these, you know, camps and things like that, it should be the health officer coordinating directly with Lone Tree, you know, the five different campgrounds there, and probably reaching out to Newtons, since they're on the other side of the, you know, country pond there.
I would say make the, make the line under 15, number 16, performs other related duties as required...
Put a number on it.
Or directed.
I would say, if you look at 14, which is new, basically add that same thing, maybe under, between B and C, just add an E.
Right.
Not, not, just acts as point of contact for EPA and New Hampshire DES, what you were just saying.
Oh, so you're saying...
Leave that there.
Okay, okay.
But take the wording, and add that as an E, but you might have to re-letter these, put it right between B and C.
Is the wording from 14 and...
No, I would like to change the wording on 14, instead of acts as point of contact, acts as primary contact.
And that was for mosquitoes, but on between B and C, add another, you know, it'll be, it won't be E, it's going to be, you know, in between B and C, act as point of contact for EPA and DES.
Do you want to use that wording instead of coordinating with state agencies?
Yeah, just act, acts as primary contact. And, well, yeah, it should be coordinate, though.
And coordinate?
Acts as primary contact, and that context makes it sound like he's just delegating from there to others.
So you want that still in there about coordinating somehow?
Yes.
And then maybe, number six, coordinating reports in board of selectmen on any ICA quality testing done in town buildings, as well as water testing.
Well, all designated public water supplies. So there's rules for, like, the library, and I believe the Rec Department, the Rec Department, there's two buildings that are classified as public water supplies, and they need to be tested every three months, in order to maintain that.
Yeah, the library and rec.
Well, I think the rec is an open year round, so that might skate by, but the library definitely does it. Could be there, but I don't know, it's only, it's only part-time, so I can't imagine...
No, they keep it heated.
Yeah.
How is this? Sixty there, sixty here, white, ninety-three, this is, this one's on here.
It is slightly lighter, though, so you can tell.
Kevin, you getting ready to move in there or having an informational dinner?
I can't, I'm working that night.
Uh, okay, how do you wanna proceed with the, uh, rewrite?
I, I.
On the help, uh, job description?
Uh, do we wanna have Susan make the changes and then?
Take one last look at it?
Yes.
We already went over the 3/25th, everybody gotta.
Gotta look at it.
What's that?
I'll look at it.
Take a look at it, too, if you're available?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. ZBA rehearing request submitted.
We put it into, to the ZBA secretary, the letter is there to add to that application. They have to decide whether they want to rehear. We had to do that within 30 days of the request.
This is the each one's vote, is that what it is?
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
And the letter that I was using in the orange folder.
It's only, it's four of them? It's five, isn't it?
One abstained, right? Or was one not there?
It was three to two.
For what? The ZBA?
I think it was a three to two vote.
No, I thought it was, um.
Peter Kaufen abstained.
Well, that's not what this, what do you mean, the abstain? Looks like Peter Kaufen voted against it. Well, I, I mean, I don't see the minutes, but.
The minute was for the.
What sign the, uh. Letter after the.
Because Peter Kaufen says, will substantial justice be done by the variance if granted? No.
I'm sorry, what?
It appears that, based on this, Peter didn't. Vote affirmative. Do we know what the vote was?
I don't know, unless it's in the letter, I don't think it really said the vote. I'm just looking at the individual pages and I, I assume from that which one voted yes or no.
Oh, here's, Ali's here.
Go back, go back.
Okay, so it must've been a three to two vote. Is that what it was?
That's what I thought it was.
I'd question that one. It's a lot of money.
Okay, so it must've been a three to two vote.
I did the letter that she did. And the orange packet? What's that?
It's in the orange folder.
Were you just talking about the ZBA?
Yeah.
311.
Oh.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Would you pass down that orange file?
Sure.
Almost like a paper.
Somebody's got to.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept the minutes, both public and non-public, for April 29, 2019. Second.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes as written signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed, abstention?
Abstention.
One abstention.
So do we wanna talk about this LexisNexis thing to get rid of that box? So. Why, why are we still buying, um, these hard copies of this when we can go online for free?
Say again?
So the, the law books that we have? So the red, the red books that have.
The RSAs, yep.
The RSAs. So years ago, I, I did away with the bunch that we had. We provided the offices with just the small books, which are a hundred times cheaper. So I don't know why we're still buying the hardcover RSAs when you go online and look the stuff up for free.
How many copies are we buying?
Well, they send you.
Just one, isn't it?
They send you one, here's one book for 366 dollars and 31 cents for one book.
Isn't that all the updates?
Well, they send you a whole, one red book. So I, I mean, I, I, I started buying them years ago because of the expense of it.
Pay for coffee downstairs.
Bobble beans, dude.
I don't, does anyone use those books in there?
They actually look stuff up.
I look them up on, on occasion.
Oh, you do?
I just think.
Well, we don't have a, I had spoken to Cindy about. Whose, whose computer was it that, uh, she recovered? About putting that on the selectmen's desk and making it available. After she removed the information, I think it was, was it Georgia, George had a laptop?
Maybe George, yeah.
Somebody had one.
Well, you can buy, instead of the books, you can buy electronic copies that is what, like, Adam did on the planning board and different people. Hey, Kevin? I wanna keep you busy.
We, we got a, um. Request for Tom Rogan for appointment, uh, fire station building committee member. Do we wanna have him in to discuss that?
Sure.
We gotta keep it going if we're doing it.
Yeah.
Can you invite him, Susan?
Jimmy, can I ask?
I think George got a pass just because he was the HTC representative.
Um, can I ask you why? I, we looked at the policy, we implemented, we were going to adopt the new policy for POs not signing them, and.
We think we, um, had the completed policy in front of you yet. I'll, I can ask Cindy about it, I know she had a draft of it, I don't know.
And I didn't think we changed anything, but.
No.
Well, it had to do with.
I got a question about that, what were you changing it to?
That.
Department head sign it and then we sign it?
She'll give you a copy of it, yeah. If we didn't have to sign anything under, you know, $500 if you have a $20,000 budget. If you have under a $20,000 budget, you, 250 was the dollar amount that we'd have to sign. Because we're signing stuff for screws and lights.
Was that?
Twenty-eight dollars.
Did Cindy even? That, or did she say that the accountant said you have to approve every invoice?
I'm not sure where it's seen, so I'll find out.
I mean, then ones like this kinda bother me.
She hadn't heard that from them or what?
$648 for walnut spray and bug repellent.
Well, that, it's not, it.
I know, but.
Yeah.
This is the other one that draws some questioning. So does the board want me to, um, to look at that intent to cut issue on Route 125?
It's over now, looks like they're done. I mean, there's some equipment there. I, I talked to you when I was picking her up and then I checked it on the way back, it's. I mean, there was an excavator still there, maybe they have more to do, but.
I don't even know these cops.
But I would be in favor of that.
All right.
Sure.
So I talked to the owner of ECSI today. He acquired a. If he needed to come before the board or go to the, go to the, uh, planning board.
What's that?
You okay with signing that?
You're okay with that, aye?
Phil, Phil, do they wanna see the owner of, uh, of the, past owner of ECSI to the planning board?
Well, he has no valid site plan there.
Right, so he asked me today, the business is in bankruptcy, so he, he wanted to know if he needed to come explain something to either the planning board or board of selectmen?
He can't do anything there until he has a site plan, and he, and that was the result of a court.
Right, but did, they, so they don't, the planning board doesn't wanna see him, they just want us to tell him he can't do anything on site unless he goes.
The process over.
Yeah, I mean, he's starting from scratch to.
All right, I'll pass that along.
I, I mean, do you agree with that, Rich?
This, uh.
That started four years ago, so.
Okay, this was, uh. I asked Susan to hold onto that. To see what the outcome is gonna become, be on this property.
Yeah.
Before we enter into, issue the contract?
Yeah, we might as well, it's not gonna make any difference. We already, we awarded it just to sign, but, I mean, we're not gonna give him if he's not gonna do anything, we gotta make a, we have to have something, an agreement signed before, just so we can pay him. That's the 18,000, right? Yeah. Might as well hold off on it, not gonna do any difference.
I had her hold it depending what happens with this.
Right. No, I agree. We're not gonna have to pay it if we don't, don't have property.
Good.
Can I ask a question that may need to be non-public, but I'd be as vague as possible? I think you know what I'm talking about. The person who was on a payment plan that was supposed to be over in April.
The person what?
The person who was supposed to be on a payment plan had, I think.
Has asked till the 14th.
Of May? Okay. And how is that coming?
A little at a time.
There's still money coming in?
Yeah.
And there had to be a certain, there was a certain number that had to be met by the 14th.
All by end of year. And they said, just needs that little bit more time.
I have a payroll question without saying names, but what is, why does this happen every week? Those, those are, um. Transfers, electronic, uh, separate accounts. Direct deposit.
Right.
Into separate accounts.
Oh, I got you.
I would say what that is.
I got you, so they're splitting up their payroll.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, we have a, our workman's comp through Primex. We've had some, since 2015. We've had increases from 17%, 16%, 12%, 14%. They do offer a cap program if you agree for 10 years not to, and it's capped at 10, 10% per year increase if you wanna participate on it. If you don't wanna participate on it, then, uh.
So it locks you into that company for that many years?
It does, for, excuse me, for three years.
Should we go shopping first?
For Primex from January 2020 to 2022. What do you wanna do?
Should we go shopping first?
You wanna put it out to bid?
Yeah.
For, for workman's comp?
I don't think, I think there was like two people that offer it, took everybody that offered?
Uh, there's a few more, to be honest with you, but yeah. I think we shouldn't just take them first. Although we'll be at their conference next week. Anyone else going to it? Mount Washington or Droid?
Droid?
Primex's conference next week.
So could you ask Cindy if she could get some competitive bids? On the companies that offer workman's comp?
Let's go and get this one, same question.
Let's see, was, was there a deadline on this?
I mean, degrease, I'm sure they use this all the time.
Expensive, isn't it?
I'm sure they use it all the time, and same thing with the horn and wasps.
You okay with it?
I'm okay with it. I'm sure they use it all the time.
Oh, look at that, we got a public notice from the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners.
There you go, that's our budget, modest, 1.9% increase.
I, uh, I did talk to Glenn about that.
No, 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 this is, Rockingham County, that's the planning mission.
We, one of our distinguished commissioners is right here.
1.9% increase, I'm sure the delegation's gonna increase to it, but, um, yeah.
Owner called today and requested extending the time until 2:00 PM.
So 10 to 12, 10 to 2, is what they wanna do.
This was for fit body transformations, it was on the plains, uh, June 1st. Field day fundraiser, does anybody have an issue extending from 10 to 12 to 10 to 2?
I don't, what day is it?
I think the bodies needed more work.
June 1st.
June 1st.
Anybody got an issue with that?
No.
You go, Rich.
You're in the center.
Yeah, just give him the back. Do you have the minutes? Oh, yeah, let's see if he's standing.
I have Mr. Rogan in. I didn't see the, uh. What was the invite from, Kevin probably be interested in that?
From who?
From the governor and executive council.
Oh, they, um, it's just information, they're. Oh, they, um, it's just information, they're going to be at Kingston Days apparently, at breakfast or something. Something that Lynn handed you.
Oh, here it is. It's addressed to Ms. Lynn Ganty. Chair, I'm delighted, uh, delighted to reach out to you in the Kingston Days Committee in preparation for hosting the governor and executive council breakfast meeting and regular meeting on Wednesday, July thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. The meeting will be attended by several department commissioners for the state of New Hampshire as well as members of the public and will be a wonderful opportunity to showcase our town and its history. The breakfast meeting begins at eight A M. with the regular meeting immediately following at ten A M. Please know that Jonathan Malanson, Director of Appointments and Liaison to the Executive Council for the Office of the Governor, will be reaching out to you to go over the details needed to accommodate the meeting as well as to come see the space we will be using.
Discuss protocol, don't look the governor in the eye.
Russell E. Prescott, Executive Council. So that's July thirty-first.
How much is that time ran?
Exception or any mixed residential use.
Okay. Did anybody have any, uh, questions, comments on the budget?
Yeah.
So that's why they're approving it.
Right, so why, why are we opposed to approving if it's within the, in the ordinance? I guess that's my question.
It sits the precedent.
Yeah, but is that, is it, in the way that I'm reading that, isn't that an approved use? I'm, I'm reading, I'm reading, uh, one ten point four prohibited uses. The way I read it, unless I'm reading it wrong, it says that it is approved, it isn't approved.
Who was it saying it's approved?
It's a C three zone, you cannot have it used within a thousand feet of the center line of one twenty-five.
Is it within a thousand feet?
Yes.
So it's within a thousand feet?
Within a thousand feet on, on, uh, in the commercial zone, industrial.
So the front building is within a thousand feet?
Okay, so that's the only reason?
That's why they had to come in.
It's, and I don't know if that captures it, right, so I don't know if we want to talk about this. The, the crux of the argument here is it's an unenforceable standard that now has set a blueprint for anybody who wants to violate that zoning. Can just say that, even though it's not enforceable, say that it's preference given for veterans and fifty-five, preference, but not actually. And so now someone could just say that and it's unenforceable, so it completely negates the zoning.
So we're opposed to it based upon it being less than, or it's within that thousand feet?
It is what, the, the reason he had to go before the Z B A is because it was within the thousand feet in the C three zone, which is for residential.
And it wasn't pre-existing.
Correct.
And I don't think it's in mixed, commercial, residential.
No, it's C three, it's...
So it's commercial only?
Yeah. The intent of C three was to allow for the rest of Hawks Ridge to go in behind it.
Yeah.
But that's because it's outside the thousand feet.
Correct. But, I don't know, I mean, do we feel that that accurately portrays what we're trying to say, or?
It's good, it does enough, it says it in...
I mean, if they have a rehearing, then we attend, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I would hope, I plan on.
Now, in that capacity, can I attend in my capacity as a selectman, because the last time I attended, not the one where they voted it in, but they delayed it the, the first time? And I said, oh, here's a selectman, I'm just, here is a private citizen, but in that, if they're having a rehearing, can we attend as selectman and, and state the board's concern?
Yes.
Okay.
I imagine there's going to be a few, a few people there.
Well, this is like the fourth hearing on this, so...
Yeah, but we're asking for a rehearing.
Right. But I'm just saying, you know...
What's, what's their obligation to do here?
The old union, right, just keep bringing it back before the board and eventually you, you wear down the opposition?
No, 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 I, I, I don't mean, I mean members of the board.
Right, okay, got you.
What's their obligation to reheare?
Anyone interested in motion for adjournment?
They don't have to have one.
They don't have to have one?
I'll second that, anything else before we adjourn? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call, roll call vote.
See, I got the badge.
Uh, that was Kevin St. James and it was seconded by Mark Hites.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
I'm going to be mad if you propose the fire.